All right.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda for the City Council Planning Commission work meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Sherri, would you like to bring the Planning Commission?
Sure, I will call the right of the Planning Commission Council.
Work meeting.
Work meeting for March 2nd, 2020 to order. All those in favor, is there anything you just want to add to the agenda? Washington accept the agenda? Second? All those in favor?
Aye. All right, great. So the first item in tonight's agenda is a joint work meeting with the Council and the Planning Commission. And before we get started, I just want to say a couple of things. It's good that the Planning and Council get together once in a while. It's been quite a few years, I think, since we've had a work meeting together. And although this has a different subject for tonight with the presentation, I think it is good for us to get together once in a while and just talk about goals and objectives. And then I also want to say that because of the years, I think, of the cooperation and working together between the Planning Commission and the councils and the planning that the city's done, it's, you know, we're all seeing some of the things come to fruition. And it's really pleasing to say that this morning eighty new employees started their training at the Canby Hills East Bethel facility. And that is exciting to have eighty new people starting work in our city in one day. And I know they've got a couple of weeks of training here, but we're going to have another opening here in another month or two with the Cedar Creek Senior Living and another set of new folks into our city. So that's good. With that, I'll turn it over, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council and Planning Commission will receive a presentation from Rick Harrison of Neighborhood Innovations LLC relating to a software program which is designed to analyze land development proposals, including road alignments, lot layouts, and densities for optimal land use. In addition, this program provides interactive 3D and virtual reality imaging for use at meetings, work session, and for displays of graphic information. City staff has shown the capabilities of this software and found this to be a potentially useful tool for their review of and comments to developers for plat proposals and other development projects. The city currently has use of the software on a six-month trial basis. There is no obligation to purchase the product at the end of this introductory offer. The purpose of the presentation is to provide information to the Council and Planning Commission so that they may judge the potential of this software as an analytical tool for evaluation of development proposals and its applicability to our specific needs. The cost of the software and peripherals would be $9,995. There is no annual subscription cost and no cost for the first three years of support or training. This time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Rick Harrison, who will give us a demonstration of the program and be available to answer any questions that the Council or Planning Commission may have.
I wanted to thank you for your time tonight, especially a joint meeting, educational meeting. It's very appreciative. And I've been working on this technology for fourteen years, and to see it being used and utilized is a huge effort to its fruition. And this would be, hopefully, one of the major tools for East Bethel to grow stronger and empower both Planning Commission and Council. I'm going to keep this short. Typically, I have a work session that's a hands-on work session. We can do a little bit of hands-on, but mostly the benefits in this initial meeting. So Land Mentor, the reason it's called Mentor, it's an educational system. A little bit more in our background is, I've been in the planning business for fifty-two years. I can tell you the only difference between a Planning Commission Council meeting fifty-two years ago and today is that PowerPoint. That's it. It's the same regs, it's the same designs. We're in the industry that's stagnated. And our job as firm is to unstagnate it and then bring some more innovation. So it's not just about technology, it's working with Stephanie and the planning staff to come up with regulations and ordinances that will strengthen East Bethel compared to other cities. So with that, I'm going to do a little bit of training tonight. So I'm going to work with you a little bit and teaching you a little bit how to recognize waste, because in all submittals, there's waste. And if you can't recognize it, the engineer or surveyor who designed it doesn't recognize it, the developer doesn't recognize it, and the city doesn't recognize it. The first step is to recognize waste, the second step is to eliminate it. And waste isn't a form typically of your streets, which also burdens your city, not in millions, but will eventually, as you grow, hundreds of millions of dollars. And using the software as a tool for better feedback, and that would be better growth. Tonight, we're going to just glance over and get you to experience the VR, and we're going to do that on an actual East Bethel development that was approved. Historically, eighty percent of all growth is suburban. You are a suburban community, you're a suburban city, and all urban design degrees are urban. There are no suburban design degrees in the United States. So how does suburbia get designed? Consultant will look at the regulations, and their job is to squeeze every inch out of that site to the minimums to maximize the density. That's how, not just the U.S. grows, that's how the entire world grows. When we go back fifty years ago, when I started this business, in this business, I would take a coordinate on a piece of paper and my head, take a protractor, read the degrees, add all the distances up, there was no memory of a computer, look at a sign of the angle in a log table, take that number times the distance, take that, and then add it to get the north coordinate. Then I'd take the cosine of that and repeat it for the east coordinate without making a mistake. That process per point took five minutes. If it was any faster, likelihood of a mistake would be made. That plat then would go to the city or the county, and someone at the city or the county would then recheck their plat. So it took about a month to calculate a plat, especially if it had curves. So ordinances typically would say, make sure the lot lines are radial or perpendicular. That comes from the day of manually calculating this stuff. That was the same for the last two hundred years. And it matters because software, training, and everything else assumes nothing's going to change, that we're stuck in time. So all the computer automation, and this is double actual speed, put the minimums in the software, and then as you move your mouse, the subdivision appears. Now, this one hundred sixty-two lot subdivision is computed and designed in two minutes, less than half the time of computing a single point. And that's the problem with that, is you might not want to live there, but it meets the minimum, so you're going to have to approve it. And that is the problem with where we're at today. And you could see that when you look in town and you see every new apartment building going up, it looks like the same person designed it. They're just button pressing and they're rev it. And that's the problem. So density doesn't drive growth, what it does is drive profits. And if we're only looking at density for profits, the byproduct of that is excess infrastructure. So the developer, just assume the developer's only interested in density for profits. The technician goes and creates a subdivision, and then it goes to City Council. He may not like it, and he might not, might visualize what it will look like, but you will approve it, because if it meets the minimums, eventually, it will get built that way. So the byproduct of that is waste. The developer never designs, the consultant does. The consultant follows your minimums to squeeze as many units. That's not land planning, that's math, that's subdividing. So we're subdividing our world, and we're not planning it. We developed this system to empower Planning Commission Council to feed back useful information if you wish to do that. Instead of saying lot six doesn't meet our minimums, what if you could communicate, by the way, you're building a half a mile of street you don't have to build? The developer will look at his consultant, saying, what did I pay you for? Then we can change the industry. But it has to be a top-down approach. So the first step is not just to have a tool, but for you to instantly look at a plan and recognize waste. So we're going to do a little exercise tonight. Where's the waste in the subdivision? If you look at it, there's a tremendous amount of waste there. It's not in the cul-de-sacs. I'm going to do just a little exercise with you, and as we move forward, if you choose to adopt the system, there'll be a lot more of this. What you're looking for, whether it's a parking lot of a commercial center or lots along a street, is are you building streets, and are the lots fronting both sides of the street? So take a look at that, just a second. The streets in red have no frontage. At about $700 a linear foot of street, because the street includes utilities and if you add walks and things like that, the streets in blue are only fronted on half of that development. So what happened is, typical in subdividing land, you get the density, but you also burden the city with the absolute most number of streets, of linear foot of street. So the math works like this. Yes, the developer did get their units, but it cost them the most amount of money. That street is then given to you, it's your problem for snow removal and update, upkeep. So what ends up being is they have to get the density, they have to get the smallest lot to get the numbers to work, and that could sacrifice livability. So there's about forty percent waste in there. The alternative, and these are actual submittal plans, is no cul-de-sacs. Again, you're looking for streets that are not being fronted on both sides of the street. Just give you a second to look at that. And we would go through, as a group, a lot of these exercises until we're comfortable that you would instantly see where the waste is, because if you don't see where the waste is, you can't communicate and fix it. I equate this to the, when I was a kid in the sixties, and my mom slammed on the brakes because there were no seat belts in the dashes, remember, some of you? The dashes were steel. This was the seat belt, it was my mom's arm coming out to stop me from hitting the... And everybody thought that was normal. No one questioned that. So this is how we change the industry. Very little waste of no frontage, but those are the only streets that are fronted on both sides. That is a tremendous amount of waste. If we can communicate that to the developer at initial concept stage, that's when they can make change. Because if you can't communicate that, what happens is it becomes your problem, and it becomes a developer's problem because they just gave up literally millions of dollars of profit that could have been used for better landscaping or architecture. So in virtually every development, there is some form of waste. I'd say ninety-five percent of the developments are like this. About five percent there isn't. But this is where we come in and as a design firm. So Cantera Coves, when we got this almost twenty-some-odd years ago, we instantly see where the waste is. When we redesigned it, there is no waste in there. We have zero percent that's not a hundred percent fronted, or what the methods that we developed, the mathematical methods, we can actually get more than a hundred percent efficiency. Lot size went up by forty-two percent, forty percent the street length went down by forty-two percent. So your tax base goes up because you got a nicer neighborhood, and your maintenance goes down. So this is what the system is about. Now, this is a commercial site, I threw this in. Again, imagine you just pulled into the main entrance off of River Prairie Drive, and you see a parking lot on the left, and you see the rear and loading docks of a commercial center on your right. That's our town center. How attractive is that going to be? But what they did was, what all planners learn, is they put the buildings in a nice soft color, and you don't, your mind thinks that's open space. So there's this trickery in planning that I learned fifty-two years ago when I started this, on how to get something approved. You use soft pastel colors, you put tree stamps on it, you do all these tricks. But the reality is, when you look at the single-loaded parking stalls, again, stalls both sides of the street versus lots both sides of a street, it's the same thing that goes, applies, is that development is incredibly inefficient. And that was approved in Altoona until we redesigned it. Any questions at this point? No? So density is, the consultant relies on the planner that relies on your regulations. If the city can communicate waste, action will be taken to eliminate it. So the step two is quantifying the waste, because it's one thing to say to a developer, you have some waste, but he doesn't see it, and you have to be able to demonstrate it and quantify it. And this had never been done, by the way, until now. No planning commissioners, no technology that has addressed this. So in the software, you wouldn't be learning the whole software, but the software has a report section that allows us to communicate the efficiency of a design. So those are the five functions. The way this site was submitted, it could have been drawn in nineteen twenty, exactly the same as twenty twenty. City submittals have not changed in at least a hundred years. So you are having to interpret the plan as well as the developer. The developer never sees what it will be built. So we live in a world of surfaces, but historically, we've communicated in terms of lines and arcs. The world we live in is not made up of lines and arcs, it's physical surfaces. And the way this works is, we define what everything is, and we assign a color or texture to it. So if I clicked query click, and we use all three buttons of the mouse, and I could go to anything and click on it, it's instant calculation of what that surface is. So we know what it is, and we know graphically in a different color. If I go to fills, this is where we define them. So they're defined by color or texture, a name, and a color in this case, and is that name active on the drawing, but most important, what is the impact? What's the economic or environmental impact of that surface? Textures work the exact same way, except we put a scale of texture, and that's it. Each simple name has a descriptive name. So we would work with your staff to use the names how you think, so you wouldn't have to think of some kind of a special name. And then we would put the impact in on that for you. So we would work with your staff on that. So using the chart function, if I click on that, it could show that only fifteen-point-two percent of that site is man-made items. That will be the first time the developer ever saw the man-made items, because the CAD systems that they use can't do spatial data easily. So that'll give them a quantity at concept plan that they could work with. But that's a false representation, because that is the site that they're working on. That other part of the site is future development. So what's the impact of this? And that is sixty-eight-point-six percent of that site is man-made items. That is way out of whack. In other words, that's like that miles-per-gallon you have on the car. If you buy a car and it says six miles-per-gallon, when you look at to buy that car, you're going to buy it versus thirty miles-per-gallon. That's what we've got, we brought into the industry, is this idea that, why aren't we at concept stage when things could be changed, giving this type of information back to the developer? So that is the measurement that's important, not is your lot sixty-foot wide, are they all twenty-five-foot setback and things like that? Any questions at this point? No? Okay. So how would this presentation be different on this, I think it's called Soter, was it Soter Development? Soter Development. That was, what, a year and a half ago or two years ago?
Twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, twenty-seventeen. How would that be different today? Now, I'm not going to say today, I'm going to say in the future, because I'm going to introduce some ideas moving forward on how the ordinance can be written. I'm going to give you two examples. Woodbury, you're in, you are at a stage right now, is East Bethel going to be like the place to live, or is East Bethel going to be where developers can buy land cheaper and have more affordable housing? That's the deciding point right now. And Highway sixty-five is your corridor. Woodbury made a decision, and Woodbury's upscale, architectural control on the commercial, because the first thing you see is commercial, I'm going to introduce that. Stillwater already had their commercial center, but they were the first city that had architectural control on all the residential. I would say, if you want to be like the place, do both. And I'm going to go into that a little bit on this future presentation. So we have the 2D plan, but the idea is, how can we get the data from a 2D layout to a 3D incredibly fast and low cost? So that's what we've been developing. So that presentation would look like this. And what we did for those buildings, the only thing that we did was, we went and SketchUp, we took the original JPGs, we cut the JPG graphics of the elevations, and we pasted them onto a square. That's the actual, that apartment is the actual PDF that I downloaded from the city data. And then we threw a roof on it. I guess there was nothing on the medical center, the senior housing, so I just made something up real quick in SketchUp. So this type of a presentation took me about three total hours. It would have taken less had we had the CAD data, but we had the hand key and the boundary and trace the topo and stuff like that. And then what we did is, we did throw a little balcony on the edges of the buildings. So this would be what would be considered a very minimal presentation. But 3D, and as you'll witness in a few minutes, the difference between 2D and 3D is the same difference of 3D and VR. When you put on those headsets, your world disappears, and it accurately represents what the built environment will be. And that's, we'll get to that. But this would be an overview of the presentation, any presentation. Those parking structures are incredibly costly, and they only cover a small percentage of the cars. The rest of the cars are left to the elements. Most residents are overlooking a sea of parking, and again, most of the parking, the cars are exposed to the sun and snow. It's a massive amount of snow removal, and the only open space where the snow can go is in the only open space disconnected from the units. So the residents of the south part of the building appear to have a good view of open space. I would suggest an anti-monotony ordinance. When I hand keyed in this, because I didn't have access to the CAD file, I put on one half, flipped it, and within about thirty seconds, I created the other half. In other words, this is a tremendous amount of construction and a lot of families living here, and the designer would have done the exact same thing. Do one half of it, flip it, and all of a sudden, you got another hundred fifty units where people are going to live, or whatever it is. And we're not taking any effort anymore to think through and design. That's an industry problem. The other thing is pedestrian connectivity, and I talked with Stephanie about this, about getting a regional trail system, it's very important, but what about the individual developments? Having a connectivity ordinance in the actual ordinance. So this would be feedback, saying this doesn't meet some ordinance that doesn't exist yet. And what about that twenty-foot between the buildings? What's going to happen in that space? That is totally useless space. Highway sixty-five corridor. Hmm?
Kids are going to hang on.
They're not doing very good things. They can't be seen. But these are the things that, you know, should have been brought up. Highway sixty-five corridor, just like Woodbury, the commercial made Woodbury the place to live. You need to, you should have a Highway sixty-five corridor ordinance. So this would say, does it meet it or doesn't meet it? I don't know. It doesn't exist. When we look at these developments, we think in our head, well, these units are looking at this space. But we should be thinking about, what is going to be built twenty-five-foot on the other side of that property line? Is it going to be just simply flipping the units over? What's the quality of that living? What's the quality of that space? Is it going to be a commercial center with these units overlooking loading docks? Is it going to be industrial with these units overlooking whatever? We have to start thinking about that, and actually wondering, what happens next door as we grow? Or, in this case, this is the existence of those units. Not terrible, but it's not great, that fifty-foot corridor. Shadows. We're going to be entering an era where solar and wind and other energy alternatives are very important. What is the solar impact of what's being proposed, which we could run in real time and month by month? So in this case, there's no issues with this submittal, running a solar analysis. I don't know, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, it doesn't appear to be. So that would be taking that simple plan and then showing it to you in a different way. But what about staff recommendations? And this is where we could really come in, work with staff, train staff, train the Council and the Planning Commission to see things differently. So again, as a review, we started with this development. That is the amount of green space, using the exact same building, but going entirely underneath the building. And even if there's a drainage problem, we can go half underneath with parking. Now what happens is, the man-made items plummet. In other words, it costs a whole lot less to develop, but no one's communicating this. So here's the question. Is it city's responsibility to just take what's there, accept it, say no word, and give no feedback to the developer at initial stages when changes could be made? Or do you make some suggestions? It doesn't have to be designing the development, but just pointing out some things so the developer can make changes before it becomes the city's problem. So this is how that could work. Instead of the end unit, that has seventy-six total spaces, we could half depress that parking, put everything underneath, now we've got over double the parking spaces, and we reduce the footprint thirty percent, saving an estimated $2 million. Now, that's a guess, it might be a million and a half, it might be two and a half million, but it's a significant number that goes to the developer's bottom line. Flow, that will be something that we would teach in the future, should you adopt the system. Flow is time and energy going through a development. This has much better flow, or introducing that even as a concept. Asymmetric parking would conform to any anti-monotony requirements, and the construction cost of that pavement would be approximately $85,000 less, because we're utilizing a more efficient plan. To meet pedestrian requirements, and this is something we would strongly recommend, is have a pedestrian ordinance. Not that you would build a walk on both sides of the street, but an actual pedestrian system. That's different than a walk ordinance. And that would make East Bethel ahead of the game for Minneapolis or Twin Cities cities. And then whatever... And then whatever detention and environmental regs that you want to go above and beyond the minimums. All the units have an expanded view of space. Is to concentrate on what are you looking at when you look out the window? That would be a view ordinance, which also doesn't exist in any city in the Twin City area. That would make East Bethel special. By the way, we do that internally on every job we plan. What are people looking at when they're in the unit, looking out the window? And the total surface is reduced by twenty percent, including adding the walks. That $2 million savings can be applied to better landscaping, better architecture, cool architectural elements they couldn't normally afford. And even things like varied balconies, that costs nothing, but it's, it reduces the monotony of a building. It makes it more exciting, instead of having the same balcony just over and over and over. Have five or six different balconies and mix them up. Little things like that, suggestions that will make the developer more successful and East Bethel more unique. So when we look at just an example of this feedback. Now Adam is going to hook up these headsets, and there's one thing about VR headsets that we've learned is they go stale. They're not meant, they're not like a normal screen, you can't keep them plugged in. So you have to plug them in a few minutes before you use them, otherwise they, they go dormant. And that's just the nature of the beast, and, and there's no, there's no software fix for that. So that's why we hook them up just before. So what happens with the system is we're giving the developer not feedback to be an adversarial relationship with the city, but more of putting the developer and the city on both sides, because the goal of the developer and the goal of the city should be aligned. The city and the developer should be looking at building the same product, and if you can save the developer, whether it's several thousand, are, are you, I don't know, pull down going into the view, the existing? Yeah. So each one of these VR will come alive. The, and then when it comes up with the VR, just click on, on the VR. But this is the type of feedback that's never been done for the developers. It makes them far more successful, and there's no excuse not to save money. And, and if they say, well, you've got trails, you've got an architectural ordinance, if you feed back and get rid of the waste for them, or show them where the waste is, that's, no one's going to complain about that. They're going to appreciate that type of feedback. And that's where we, we come in. Now with the VR, what Adam is doing, and some of you have the old plan, some of them the new plan, if I run previous virtual reality, it brings up a video gaming engine. So the way we, we did this fourteen years ago, 3D wasn't being used. And I said to my programmer, let's use video gaming. Video gaming, anybody under forty years old already knows how to use. I can give a kid this Xbox, I'm not good with this, I'm sixty-seven, okay? I admit to you. So I can give a kid this and that and say, not say a word, and they're just going to be able to go around. It's just video gaming. So if I, what I could do is use a keyboard to move around, the forward arrow, the back arrow, left and right. Now, what, when, when these things come alive, what I want you to do is put on the headsets. The animal guide you on that. So the idea is on any contentious item, if a neighbor complains, what's this going to look like out my backyard? You could actually have a system out here, and they could actually see what it's going to look like.
Can I still have my glasses on?
Out their backyard. Yeah. So Adam will guide you on that. So if I hit G for ground, I go to ground level, forward, left, right, you're in the video game. So I could go anywhere on the site and move about in real time. Okay, so if you look around, Adam, do you want to see what they're looking at?
Space.
What we do, okay, so what we do on VR is we put jump points. So Stephanie would be controlling what you would see now. Randy, are you seeing anything?
Clouds.
Okay, Adam, Adam will fix that. Just hit, get him a jump point.
Look down.
Yeah, look down. Okay. So I had it where it started out in the air, but the first time, we were the first in the world to use VR in public meetings. In twenty fifteen, we started using it. And what happens is, looking at a screen, the only way you could judge space is to look at people and cars. When you put on the VR headsets, you're in control. And the way this would work is Stephanie would be in control of what you would see. And she would jump to different points on the site, and then you would look around to get some, some of the things that she would want to point out. But the council and the planning commission would be looking at the same thing in unison. Right now, we've got the, the three different systems. So what VR does is it accurately represents the actual space, which you can't see in a 3D screen. And then you're immersed and you could see around it. So whatever the planner is doing with pastel colors, or tree stamps, or what else, that's the reality, okay? And you would use it only on the contentious sites, because you wouldn't want to use it, you know, if, if there isn't a problem. But the feedback of the, the waste in any development is golden to the people who are submitting the plan. And that's what the VR is good for. And the first time I ever put on a VR headset in twenty fifteen, it's the first time I realized that the truth in planning is going to come to the future of cities. And, and that's what we've been working this last five years to, to create. Any questions on that? Randy's going to take that home tonight, I could see.
He looks a little like Robocop.
Yeah, a little bit. So as you could see on that screen, we could see what you're seeing. And so the idea again is to get everybody on the same scenes and communicate with each other. Jason, do you want to see what the, they're seeing up there? Yeah, we don't want to move people around with the VR because of that.
He did for me, yes.
Tom? Are you, are you able to see in there?
Oh, I see green and white stripes.
Okay, okay, so I'm going to move these.
This is what he's seeing right, turn all the way around, Tom.
Yep.
Yeah, turn all the way around in your chair.
Swivel your chair, Tom.
There you go. And then you can look all around, and you tell me when you want to move to the next spot, and I'll move you to the next spot.
What's cool about this, if we had the architecture, we could go inside every unit and look out the windows.
So here, we're kind of on the periphery of the, of the layout, but these jump points are primarily set up for presentations, talking points of certain areas here, you'd be talking about maybe the pond or the, or the parking lot layout, perhaps the architecture, the future open or future development area behind you.
Now another thing is, you have a system here. You have a system here at the city, so this is something that you could use or, you know, play with anytime.
No, I like the one where you got the building turned the other way, the other L backwards, it, it just looks sharp, it looks sharper that way.
And, and this is the kind of feedback, just little feedback, you're not designing, you're giving suggestions. And then they go to the consultant, and that's how the industry changes. Because if we don't say anything, fifty years from now, it's going to be the same stuff. And that's, the VR is just, it's a plus, but it's not the value of the system.
You look to your right or left, and I'll go slow because this will make you busy.
What we did was, the entire VR instructions are on that one little handout. And the exception is, what we just added was the ability to brighten or darken the image live. But if I look above and I hit T for time, right now, it defaulted noon. The time is at the lower right part of the screen, and I could go month by month or live. So if someone's saying, you know, this is going to block my sun if it's built next door, you could go live at the meeting and ask and, and answer that. The information on the environmental impact, if I hit submit in green, that fast, it just calculated to twenty decimal places a square foot on every item on that site, that fast. That's live. And this is not even a fast computer. If I hit chart and submit, that's the environmental impact. So what, what we did was we, we don't have a drawing. All we have is the pure math of growth. That's all we have. And the drawing is actually calculated from scratch at every screen refresh. And that allows us to do things that, in a design atmosphere, like, like for example, legal description of that parking lot, that's a legal description of that parking lot. So the power of this system isn't like a GIS system where there's a drawing, or a CAD system where there's a drawing. The drawing's the communication, but what, what's important is the actual math. It's a engineering surveying system that communicates differently. And for cities, it's the same system for consultants, cities, or anybody, except the training would be specific to the, your needs. Not to design, you could use it to design a new park, Stephanie could do that. But to work with your ordinances, in my fifty-two years experience designing and working with cities, I've done this last twenty-seven years in this business, thirteen hundred developments in forty-seven states and eighteen countries. So we have the experience of working the other side of the table to see where the holes are. That's included with the system, is our goal is to change this industry and move beyond the stagnation that we have. So the city's system retails for thirty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five. That's discounted thirty thousand dollars already from our retail. That includes three years' training support, peripherals, mentoring, suggestions on the regulatory side. You're paying nine hundred ninety-five dollars to be an initial adopter. There's one caveat, is to work with us, perfect this, use it, and then we have recommendations that we can then build a business on. Conversions are sixty dollars an hour. It took me three hours to do that, but let's say conservatively, that initial plan, let's say it would take five hours if we had really bad data. That would be three hundred dollars. Consulting, feedback and mentoring in a reasonable basis is just part of the system. If it's consistent, then we would charge two hundred an hour. I would typically charge five hundred an hour for my services on that. The, again, sixty dollars an hour to build the 3D and prepare it for a meeting. If we had CAD data, that time will go down, this feedback example would have been about five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollars to save millions of dollars. And that file is then available to the developer, and LAN Mentor in viewer mode, which is free, would allow the developer to use that for their marketing, for their analysis, or anything else. So that's the value that the submitter would gladly pay for, because they're going to be more successful. The submitter benefits because it will create more livability, functionality, marketability, value, safety, attractiveness, reduce the environmental impacts, and much more. The submitter won't know what the development looks like till it's built, but they will know what the development looks and feels like at the initial stages, again, when things could change, because they're in the same boat you're in. They won't know what it, it looked and feel like until it's built. All of that adds value and puts both the submitter and the city at the forefront of development. It's the only solution ever made that addresses these holes in growth. And so with, with East Bethel being at the forefront, we would work with you at the best of our ability to add the value for your growth, add the taxable income, and do the, the best type of feedback working with staff, so that the people who develop in this city will develop with less infrastructure. In Centerville, twenty-five years ago, I went to Tony Emmerich with an idea. I said, I have a concept, which is placing the homes not parallel to the street, but at varied setbacks, that reduce infrastructure and add value. Tony said, let's go for it, on a sixty-acre site, Eagle Pass in Centerville, this is twenty-five years ago. With that site, St. Paul Press, Pioneer Press ran an article, New York Times picked it up, ran a full-page article, HGTV did a series on it with only three homes built, and got national press. Today, we've got thirteen hundred developments that were built from that single seed all around the country, around the world. And that's just our firm. I know that we've been emulated by other firms. We have no idea how big this thing came from that one development. Today, that seed, we're planting here in East Bethel for cities. And hopefully, that changes the way cities will grow, the same way that we did with the planning business. And this is what we've been working fourteen years on, that I'm presenting for you tonight. So it's not about a software package. It's about working with East Bethel to take our experience on suggestions. We're never going to tell you what to do, we're only going to open your eyes to different ideas that will be unique, that you can use or not use at your discretion. But our job as a consultant is to do everything in our power to make you successful, along with the technology that will allow you to change the way you communicate. And that's the end of part one of your training. There's a lot more. So what do you guys think?
I understand, I understand what you're doing and, and the changes on, on different ways the development can be done to maximize. But my question is, is there, there must be some other change that needs to happen, because if a developer like this one comes in, and is the process then to take what they provide and redo it with this process and then show them what it can be?
Maybe. There's varied options. One is One is to just show where the waste is. That's easy.
Sure.
Okay? And then just say, you know, you got building half a mile less street. We don't really want a half a mile more street to maintain. And this is going to cost you X number of dollars. That's easy. But we would work with staff in a way to develop feedback where we're not designing anything as such. We also would work, but I'm going to back up. City of Woodbury, how did they, how did they pull that off on architectural control on commercial? How did Stillwater pull off architectural control on residential? What they did was they had certain, uh, Woodbury had certain standards that they had like, almost like a comic book on their ordinance. They've changed that since, but I thought it was kind of nice because a lot of people don't understand growth. It was like a picture book ordinance. And it showed images of what the character of Woodbury needs to be if you want to get your commercial approved. And that was Dwight Pica, and it was brilliant. So you don't necessarily want to design, but have enough guidance so that you're, you're giving enough information. I could give you some examples of some things we've done locally and not locally, and expansions of ordinances. And all of that has to have the benefit to the submitter. So why is that regulation different? And how does it benefit the submitter? When you put it in those terms, because whenever a developer sees a regulation, they automatically go on, "Oh, my God, this is going to cost me money" mode. And so I don't want part of it. You know, like architectural control is like, you don't want too many controls. You want freedom for innovation. City of Stillwater, I did the worst development in Minnesota I did in, by the way, in Woodbury. They had no controls over the residential. It's called Savannah Oaks. And Woodbury uses it as an example of a terrible development. I saved seven hundred fifty linear foot of street. And their homes, and this is a US home thing, was a three-car garage and a door. There were no windows in the front. It was just a three-car garage and a door. So it looks, the development has the varied setbacks, but it's ugly as anything. So they bought a site in Stillwater. And I said, "So what are you going to use in Stillwater?" And they said, "Well, we're going to use the same product." And I said, "But Stillwater has ordinance that only forty percent of the home front could be garage." And they're like, I said, "Yours is like ninety percent." And they said, "We're US homes," and da-da-da-da-da. So we're at the meeting, we're showing the site plan, it's Settler's Glen. And they brought up the elevations of the homes. And the mayor said, "Leave. Pack up your stuff and go. This is the end of your presentation. Get out of here. What didn't you understand about what our regulations say?" So we walked out of there and I said, "Look, you know, look at the intent." The intent of the ordinance is they don't want to see this, what you've got. So you could come in with like a two-car garage this way, a one-car garage this way, and there's ways you can make a false front so that the house doesn't look like it's all garage. And they came up with a series of architecture that Lennar still uses today. And this was twenty years ago. And the home was still mostly garage, but you didn't notice it. In other words, we met the intent of the ordinance, even though we didn't meet the number. So that's an example of how a regulatory system could get you what you want so you don't have to design anything for them. And you could show examples to follow. So that's how we would work with staff instead of giving that kind of feedback.
So if I understand you right, in order to apply some of this, we have, you can't do it under our current ordinances, the minimums that you...
Everything I showed you applies to your minimums, but your, that alternate plan applies to your existing regulatory minimums. But there's a civil engineer or surveyor laying it out is going to think in terms of this. The ordinances should be a guide on suggestions, just like Stillwater, well, just like Woodbury was. Stillwater really didn't give us a guide. They gave us minimums. But Woodbury gave us a guide. And that's where it's different. And I've seen ordinances like that, and they're very successful. But without a guide to make suggestions, how are you going to expect someone to come up with something better? Unless you fed them back. And that's up to staff and you internally, how you want to do that. But at the end of the day, East Bethel's very unique. Growth is coming your way, and you're right at that magic stage. That's a very unique position you're in. That's going to set the future. And Stephanie, she's great. She's on the right track. Our job isn't just to give you the software, that's why it's called, again, mentor. It's to just give you suggestions. And it's up to you as the council and the planning commission to guide that. Because you're really in control.
Yep, go ahead. I think you just speak out probably.
I liked most of everything that you presented in terms of intent and the better design of getting away from monotony. It's been a thing that's irritated me for many years, just capping it in, but not allowing creativity. To me, though, the VR is entirely frivolous. And you have the three-dimensional graphics that went on the screen. That's really helpful and all various things you can do. The decorum of having people at a public meeting wearing these things and what you get out of that, to me, is not a complete leap problem. Everything you can get from the screen.
And I would agree with you. The VR would only be for, in that area, when someone is saying, "Look at all the space," or representing something, it is the backup to...
When you didn't have such clear information on the screen.
Yeah. We just include it. You know, like I said, don't get stuck on the VR. Get, concentrate on everything else on the system.
Right, but to invest either time or money on it, to me, is wasteful given that this is such a leap forward already with the different things you can click on.
Yeah. The headsets add two hundred dollars. But you need the, the hard, you need the hardware to drive the 3D in real time anyhow. It's like you said, I didn't want you to concentrate on the VR. I'm just showing it. That's not the strength. It's, it's everything else, like you said.
The VR comes from the 3D, it's not like we're creating anything more.
Yeah, it's a plug-in. It's, if it's an issue, that, that's the truth of space. That's all that is. And again, you wouldn't use it unless it's important because it is a little cumbersome and disruptive to a meeting. So it's, and our mistake originally was visiting cities and leading with the VR. Because that's, that's really now. We didn't even know VR existed when we developed the system. It just kind of came in. But I would agree with you, yeah.
Would it be fair to say the VR is an enhancement?
It's just, yes. It's, it, software, we include everything. This is an engineering, surveying, design system. You can lay it out. You wouldn't use it for that. But we don't have modules. We don't have extras. So the software alone, if you were a consultant, is four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. There's no extras. There's perpetual updates and upgrades. So this would include three-year support for a city. But let's say after that, you figure, "Well, we don't need this support." You would still get perpetual updates and upgrades. We feel that people, when they buy software, shouldn't be nickled and dimed to death with subscriptions. And there's a few software packages I've bought that, you know, I get treated the same way. Where, when we wrote Prefer BR book, that software, I always get perpetual updates and upgrades. It's just a way to treat people right. And if we have market share, talking about a lot of profit anyhow, what do I care? You know? But I'd rather just, it's easier for us to have software that's not modular. You just get everything, period. If you don't use it, it's like, you know, you get Microsoft Office, you get everything. If you never open Excel, why? You're still getting Word and everything, PowerPoint and everything else.
One of the things we deal with is fiduciary responsibility. And somebody asked, "Well, why are, why are you even interested in this for the cost, et cetera, et cetera?" What, is there a way to estimate? We don't have a lot of stuff going on. There's some stuff in the, there's some perspective things going on, but it's not like there's ten projects out there or something. What? The more used, the more value. Where, what, is there a way to quantify?
Yeah.
How to...
The first development that comes in, if for every linear foot of street you save, that becomes your responsibility. It doesn't take very much for the system to pay for itself. It's retail cost of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five. So from that perspective alone, it should pay for itself very quick on the first development. But what's the value of having a more attractive city? A city that is more functional, that has more pluses than your surrounding cities to live in? That's what we're talking about. It's a complete package. And that's, you know, to not, to... This development example I showed you, that was private development with a private parking lot. That's the savings for the developer because they weren't public streets. But if they were public streets, just on one development, it's paid for itself multiple times on maintenance and moving forward versus not doing anything, doing what you're doing now.
So I have a couple of concerns. I mean, I think, I think what you're presenting is great, but it almost seems like it would be better for a designer to have this than it would be for the city. I mean, I'm understanding the part where we're saving on the roads section where, okay, if we don't have to build so many linear feet, that's going to be a cost savings for the city. But when a developer comes in here and they present us with something, they have to go through basically paying a designer to do the CAD drawings and everything else up front. And then they come to the city with it. We put it into this software. And then we're coming up with something totally different to get these savings involved. So then we're asking them to then go back to their designer and spend more money just for that design. Are you saying that we're actually saving them more money by doing that?
Yeah. And the initial concept stage, this is where you want it. Not the, not the, not when they're through preliminary plat engineering. Preliminary plat engineering, they've gone through the sewer design, the earthwork, and everything else. At an initial concept stage, they're coming in with a sketch. That sketch, they didn't spend much money on. In fact, that sketch, the engineer and surveyor typically throws it in for free. To be a land planner in the United States, there is no registration for it. There's no qualification other than to put land planning on a business card. Every consulting firm in this country are land planners. Why? Because it gets the surveying and engineering work. So you've got an industry that is woefully behind. And to think that the developer is going to go to that consulting firm and they are going to come up with a good design is not the case. But they'll come up with a better design if the city gives guidance in the ordinance, which Woodbury did. And to a point where Stillwater did, but by numbers. And proper feedback. And that's what's missing in every city I've worked in for the past fifty-two years that we're trying to make a change. There is no technology that gives the feedback of where the waste is. Does not exist until we invented it.
So even, even with that, though, they could come forward with their plan and we, we put it through our software and we're saying, you know, gee, we're building an extra half-mile of road with your design. We would like you to rethink it. And they say, "Well, we've seen what you've given us, and you're only giving us an extra two lots, and we don't really care about the road that you have to, have to cover." They could still, I mean, as long as, as long as you, they're fulfilling that.
Yeah.
The requirements, I mean, we really don't have a leg to stand on the side.
Right, right.
No, you can't do that.
Yes, you're powerless. They could come in and get a cookie cutter, ugly design if you don't change your ordinances and you, and meets the minimums, and you will have to approve it. You give them feedback and they go, you know, I've got... The surveyor and engineer typically designs it for free, that initial concept plan to get the contract for the engineering surveying. So the concept plan is typically at no cost. But let's say they spent two thousand dollars. And you gave them feedback and the light bulbs go off. And they go, "Wait a second. I could get a better product." Because they're building a product, no different than your cell phone or any other product you buy. If they build a better product that's more competitive, they're more successful. And that's the same way that when I work for a developer, because I'm certainly not cheap. I'm about five hundred dollars a unit at preliminary plat approval versus free. And that's just for the planning. So when a developer comes to us, "Why am I paying your fees?" I go, "Well, you know what? You'll build twenty to thirty percent less infrastructure. You're going to have walking connectivity. You're going to have no monotony. You're going to have a higher-value product with more premium lots for what is essentially the price of the bathroom sink in a house." When, and they could go ahead and build a cookie cutter plan. But if they build something that's more valuable, that's a smarter move for them. But there is no mechanism in any city in the United States that gives that kind of feedback. And that's what we're trying to change here. Is to give that power to the city so that developer can go to the consultant. And the other issue is, a lot of consultants charge a percentage of infrastructure cost. They profit the most with the worst design. Okay? So that's the other issue, is how we can change the consulting industry by having the developers who pay them be aware that there is better ways. If we do nothing, again, fifty years from now, same thing's going to happen in the planning commission and council of every city. And that's what we've been working towards, is to change that. And, but you're perfectly right. They could go in and they say, "I don't care. I want to meet the meeting next month. I want to get it in the ground. I don't want to come back. This meets your minimums, and you are going to have to approve it." And so the object is, well, maybe work and change the minimums.
Okay, so let's get down to a little bit of the nuts and bolts of the cost of what you're talking about. And I'm, I'm hearing the nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars for the software, the hardware, which is a laptop, a VR set, and support. How much is, if, you know, because it says, you know, the additional, VR headsets are additional, okay? How much is, if, you know, because it says, you know, the additional VR headsets are additional, okay? And granted, the concern is whether we need them or not. But my question still stands, what is the cost for that additional hardware to the city?
Yeah.
I heard, I thought I heard you say $200 per headset.
Right, but, but you have to drive the headset with a laptop, so.
So each, 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 each headset would require its own laptop?
Not only its own laptop, but a VR laptop. So you'd be looking at, now, we're, we're looking into us building boxes because you don't need the full laptop, you just need to drive them. But I would estimate that, even if we build our own boxes with the graphics board and everything, you'd be looking at about $1,000 a seat. That would be included if we were at retail at the $39,995. But we're, we can't afford to do that at $9,995. So $9,995, the VR system that we provided, worst case scenario.
Yep.
Can drive this council meeting just like this did.
But it says here, according to, to what I'm reading, is installation of your software could be put on an additional two computer systems.
Yes.
At City Hall, the software would run fine on any modern computer with a good graphics needed board for advanced 3D use.
Yeah, so, right, your staff would have them in your office and at your discretion, another software package. Software is $4,995 a seat. So that's essentially $15,000 retail and software alone. And then we supplied the.
For each additional seat, in other words, whether, whether we have a compatible computer or not, we're still spending.
No, you're spending.
An additional?
No, you're spending $9,995 for three seats. We would install exactly the same system, exactly the same support, exactly the same everything as a $39,995 system, except we can only supply at that cost, one VR computer, what we've already given you, the one VR computer and the headset.
So maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing the translation here.
Yeah.
So you're saying that we could or could not put this on a two additional computers?
Absolutely, you put on two, two additional computers at no charge.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to hook up the headset, right?
Yeah.
Then we'd have to purchase the headset to go along with it, correct?
Yeah, an additional computer to drive it. You already got a headset here that we supplied.
So you're saying that, that, you say an additional computer. So even though you're loading it on, on this computer, so, again, forgive me, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure this out.
Yeah, I'm trying.
So my computer, right? Would have high graphics potential on it. So if I loaded your system onto my computer, I would only need then the VR headset to make that work?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, in fact, if you wanted this on 20 computers, the software in viewer mode gives you full access to the 3D, the VR, and the analysis part of the software. You wouldn't be able to design or save anything new. The three systems allows you to create. Anybody can download the software and then take a Land Mentor file, read it in, do 3D, do VR, because we want it, we wanna create a communication platform where no one looks at a plan and guesses what it's gonna look like. So when I do projects for the developer clients I have, they could download the software, they could download the file and at their own, they could go in each home, look out the windows and then experience in 3D. If they wanna spend some extra money, they can get a VR-enabled laptop and hook up this set of VR headsets, which some of them do. But the software should run fine. But the three seats allows you full access to all of the capability of Land Mentor.
Thank you, that answers my question. So then, the next part is, you were talking about the site conversion service. So my question on that is, does that mean with every project that we would do here, we would have to contact you to have that conversion service?
No.
Or is that something you're training our staff to do?
The training would include for your staff to be able to do those in-house. We're just offering it as a service in case staff doesn't wanna do it. Which, in most cases, most cities we've talked to, staff does not want that additional headache. So we priced it at $60 an hour, which is undercutting anybody in town for what they could charge to support the city.
Okay. So my understanding is, the city currently is under trial with you.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
And that was in, when did, when did that start?
I think the trial's up in June.
It was mid-January it started?
Yeah, mid-June. So we'd want you to use this and bother us as much as possible between now and then to, to figure out, we're here for you. It's no charge. At the end of that time, you can decide whether it was worth it or not.
Okay.
That includes the consulting with your staff. And, and any training you would need or want or desire. This just gave you a taste of what a training.
Sure, yep. I, I think that, I'm sorry, that's done for me now.
I wanna come back again to, I guess, the application of the system, you know, in a situation. So as we are now, you know, runner's trial period and assume, assume we accept it and, and sign up for it. Again, how, we, we can take a plat that comes in and we can do what I call our, our own analysis and how it can be done and then show that developer, here's what it can be. But it sounds like without, without making some changes to ordinance within the city, really, it, it, all it is is a suggestion to them. Even if we show them that, you know, you know, like example, where, you know, it's gonna be 25% fewer roads, developer may not care because it's not their cost after they give the road to us. Whereas interest in us to have less roads to, to reduce maintenance costs.
Isn't the developer paying to have the roads put in, or is?
Yes, they will.
Yeah, well, that's a huge cost, that's most of profit.
Again, it's still at a suggestion. We, we want something done for, from, others call from aesthetic standpoint. You know, there's something, it could be done differently.
Yeah.
And even if we show them that, you know, if you do this, this is gonna save you costs in the long run, it's, it's, it's still at that point, it's just a suggestion to them.
Right, it's, it's a suggestion, yeah.
But until, until we change, do we have to change ordinance to make that happen, to have that control?
I think in talking, and, and Jack could, you know, was a little bit more involved, but in talking with Stephanie and looking at when you hired her and her being proactive with the city's growth, that, in my talks with her is, she's trying to guide the city to do the similar thing, is to create ordinances that allow better and stronger growth for East Bethel. And all I would do is take our experience and work with her and suggestions and that, you know, working together on that as part of the system, which alone, that type of consulting would be far in excess of what we're charging the system for the city. We're just trying to give a tremendous value to the city. And whether a developer goes for it or not, you know, or takes these changes, the city's powerless unless you write it a strong ordinance between now and then.
Okay, sure.
So if the city, I, I understand the city wants control of some of this with ordinances, but can't we write an ordinance to ask developers to do minimal? Is the city saying this is, why aren't they paying for the software and we do? Why are we paying for it?
Well, then the same way is, why is the industry not changing for the last 100 years? Okay, if someone doesn't, what we're here tonight to do is change things. I can work for developers, I do classes, I could, I could teach, and I do teach. But if we do nothing, we're gonna, I, I, I'm teaching a class at St. Thomas on disruption. That's the spring. There's two things that have not changed. The, that device, that when you get a shoes, that's a Brannick device. They measure your foot with that same device that was patented like in 1920s. Our developments today have not changed since the 1920s. And you're asking, why can't just the, the, the consultants do it? Well, some consultants are. Over in Barry Dornan, and that's, what's, what's that?
Inspector.
Yeah. What's, yeah, Bogart Peterson, they invested heavily in the software. But they've invested heavily in the classes and software, that's just one firm. It's just, it's a step, is where do we start? I wanna show you something to give you an idea of what I'm talking about. This is a five, essentially, it's a city, it's a master plan, McAllen Plan, I'm gonna say date modified. This developer, this is 8,000 homes on 2,600 acres. So the city of McAllen's ordinances are not sufficient to get good development. And the problem with the ordinances is, the site plan, if you, or this development's 8,000 units, I said, the first development that goes in, if it's shoddy, that is writing the future. In the same way, shoddy development is gonna write the future of East Bethel. So how do you protect yourself? Is to have an ordinance, and all, all our information is open to share with you, is write an ordinance that's a minimums that assures that nobody can do shoddy development. And I'm just gonna go down to a section, oh, this isn't the final document, but for everything that we have in the ordinance, we have a section of how it benefits the developer, the economics, and the people. So that it's not just something in writing that says, you will do this, but here are the benefits. And that is also missing from ordinance. If thou shalt do this, but there's no basis, you know, why are we doing this? And so that Trace Lago's regulation helps developers understand why they're doing something different. Because there's this automatic no. Another one that.
Basically, we need to be proactive and let developers come here eventually learn that we have a different approach.
In the same way that Stillwater and Woodbury does, no different.
So they will, over time, probably go through the step earlier. It's a little anticipate, that's what they're gonna have to do and our ordinance will support that.
Yeah.
So it's just, and we put the developer to throw some rain in the backseat.
What I learned when I first started this coving technique, about the first five years after Eagle Pass, I needed the practice. And developers were flocking to us because to save 20 to 30% without losing any units is a big, like, dollar signs going off. And I did some truly awful developments that my name was on because there was no architecture, there was, you know, three-car garage and a door, not just Savannah Oaks. Savannah Oaks was the worst, but, you know, architectural character's not really a thing that was real prevalent in the 80s and 90s here. No landscaping and parked up with trucks and boats and motorhomes and everything else. And I said to my wife, I said, you know what? Our name's on all this stuff. And occasionally, there was, you know, good development too. So these developers would come to me and they'd say, I'd tell them, I don't work for you anymore. Well, why not? I used to have all these numbers in my head. I'd say, I'd save you 27% of the street, you know, X number of linear foot. And what did you do with it? Nothing. You put all that money in your pocket and the urban development goes down the street from you and they got architecture and they got landscaping and they got walks. You're gonna have to give your lots away. Or, I said, what did you do the first few homes? Looks like a junkyard in the front yard. I said, you just destroyed all your profits. And I turned every one of those developers around and I thought they were just cheap developers and builders. They just were doing what has always been done. And I was like, why can't we write our ordinances like that? Why can't we guide these people? And my choice is, I didn't work for them anymore, but I didn't have to give up any clients. They were just doing what everybody else was doing. Market studies. Those duplexes are selling like hotcakes. I'm gonna build duplexes. That's not a market study. They're just replicating what's being built. You could build single-family homes detached at the same density as duplexes and have a better value. But you just build what the next guy did. And that's not a way to grow cities.
So Jack, staff's been working with us for a couple of months. What's, any perspective from staff on this?
We had a meeting with this group, they gave us a two-hour demonstration. It's kind of a hands-on thing where they went through some of the processes to manipulate the software. It was Nate, Stephanie and myself. I thought the potential for this is very interesting. That's why we requested that they come and make this presentation to council tonight so that everybody could see some of the applications of this. I'm hoping maybe that we get something on proposed development that'll be coming to planning commission in April. That maybe we can just do a trial run on this and see what it would do. In addition to the apartment thing, which I thought was a great, great presentation, particularly fit our application, but this other one would really be a test for it.
Yeah, I think, I think Elvich is what you're talking about. It'd be a good example as a test for us to see what can be done.
That's correct.
And the first few we'll put in at no charge, that we told, said that too. We won't charge it. And we're, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and one other thing, we were talking, talking here a little bit about cost and whose business is developers' cost or our cost to give them these recommendations? I think this is something that could be put in as part of the escrow fee, as part of the consulting services for this.
Yeah.
So that the developer would essentially be paying for it. This is part of our analysis of their site plan review. So, you know, I, I think we came away from it with the impression that this thing has potential and we want to explore it more.
Yeah, again, I think, I think if this can be applied to the Elvich proposal and, and then work with them too, show them what can be done, it'd be, it'd be a good analysis, I think, for, for planning and council to see how this, how this can be beneficial to everyone.
I think so too.
And we would appreciate a, a real test site, and that's something that was two years prior to.
Right, and this is one that's, hasn't started yet, so this would be a good one.
One of the things, you know, Buffalo has an identity problem. And it's, there's a lot of substandard housing that's been built there. And we did a project in Buffalo. This is a example of architectural controls. What we did was, these are all middle to average builders that these examples are. They're all twin-city area. So we're not saying anything that's not already been done, but showing a set of minimums. So. So, one of the things that we're showing is a two-car garage is at the end of the unit, not an add-on one. This is stuff that's being, not every builder's doing this, but the trend is to balance the architecture. So these are examples of, this is that, that building, these are all in Stillwater. That's the one that doesn't look like it's all garage. So that's what we came up with, is, again, you're giving suggestions to builders on, you know, what to, to do that, and none of this, not one thing is anything unusual that's not already being done. It's just some guidance in, as part of the development. The other thing that we did was, we, instead of having a twenty or twenty-five-foot setback, we had a twenty-five-foot setback to the garage, twenty-foot to the living space, and inside that twenty-foot, you can have up to six-foot porch. That way, the builder is encouraged to build a porch. Because if the porch is at the front building setback line, every foot of porch is taken away from living space. So things like that. That's, again, adding value and character, but not sacrificing the builder's potential is how you want to address things at the city. And all we would do is suggestions, we would never tell you, I never tell a developer client what to do, I just suggest. And so, we would never get you out of your comfort zone. That's, that's what we would do as part of the system.
But when you're thinking about this, Jack, do you have any thought about how you would attach carrots to ordinances?
You know, I don't think you have to attach carrots to ordinances, you just write what the standards are and incorporate them into reflect some of the design standards that we'd like to achieve, maybe so they can be incorporated with this. I think the carrot in all this too, from a developer's standpoint though, is potential cost savings he may realize. And the potential cost savings the city may realize in future maintenance, so we're just doing some quick calculations. If we saved a thousand feet of street from a snowplowing cost, it takes quite a few years to make up a lot of money, but when that street has to be overlaid, a thousand feet of street could cost you fifty to seventy thousand dollars for an overlay. So, you start adding those things up, and it becomes, those cost savings become apparent. And that's why I think that, I thought this was a very interesting tool, so we can provide some maybe analytics and further evaluation and a deeper evaluation of some of these proposals. It would probably benefit both the city and the developer in terms of cost, but also maybe in terms of the aesthetics of the development.
Sure, I, I easily appreciate that, I'm just thinking how the more verbiage there is in an ordinance, the less interest there is in working with it.
Well, the thing about this is, this isn't going to be to somebody that wants to go out here and buy a two-and-a-half-acre lot in a single-family home. It's going to be to more larger-scale developments and developers that are used to working with a lot of these issues, especially when it comes to architectural standards and aesthetic qualities. And I think they would be certainly receptive to looking at some design alternatives and potentially save them money.
Like what's discussed with the, the porch, that's an exception to the ordinary setback?
Yes.
Is that how it'd be described?
We should, we've been on this topic for a long time tonight, which has been very good. Are there any other questions that we have? Is there anything else that you wanted to present yet tonight, or?
Um, I could go on for months. You did not want me to continue. I, this, I showed you sixty slides, this, this goes on another sixty or seventy of what I was preparing. No, I know, but, um, it's, it's, this, this East Bethel is as important to us as your growth is to you because if we can add to your success and your stability and your sustainability and prove the value of the system, no matter what it costs, I could tell you that, what, it took me maybe an hour to convince S E H, Stan Tech, Bogart Peterson as a consulting firm, the value we have. We've been meeting with cities for about a year, and no one wants to be first, that's why we're offering this. And so, whatever it takes, I don't care.
I think you got, I think you, we all have a good opportunity with this development coming up to work with our staff and to see what can be done. And, and, you know, it's good to see nice quality presentations, but that you'll see something that could possibly be changed and done is, I think, a little more value to us in terms of our deliberation, so.
Yeah, and we said the first few that we would work on, we would handle that at, at no cost because we want to perfect this too. And Stephanie is very forward-thinking, and that's the type of staff we want to work with.
And with council's direction, we will work with them to come up with something for this Elvish project.
Okay.
Just a quick question. Are you guys close to using GIS and linking this software to GIS?
Uh, this software will directly read data from AutoCAD and GIS, but the, and this could be used to create an accurate base map. GIS, ESRI is the standard for GIS, and that's a nineteen, mid-seventies data structure. So when you look at the data, it's all polygons that are closed into a database. We cannot replace ESRI because everything we do is a mathematical calculation. ESRI is very, very basic and can regenerate the entire city very fast. We can't do that, but we could be used, at your discretion, the software without any changes, as a land surveying software. It could be used to build a better GIS base over time to create an accurate map. For example, the city of Eagan, we used the Dakota County data years ago. That is to land survey accuracy, so you can depend on the data. But that's a hideously expensive process that they went through. But this could be used for all kinds of purposes, and one of the big purposes is to, over time, perfect your map.
I, I ask because we have a lot of missing pieces that tie, we have a chunk here, a chunk there, a plot here, a plot here. Linking those would solve a lot of problems, but we can't see all of them at once, we can't see the benefits of them all at once.
Yes, and that is, you have a, how many square miles is this about?
Forty-eight.
Yeah, you have forty-eight square miles. I would concentrate on the areas where development's going to go. And, but you're going to need a land surveyor to piece all that together, otherwise, it's, it's going to be garbage data. So that's a decision cities have to make, but this tool is the best tool for that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for being here tonight, stay in contact with Stephanie and Jack and...
Yeah, and look forward to working on that development.
All right.
All right, thank you. And, and, did I answer everybody's questions? Okay.
I think, well, if there's anything follow-up, we can get hold of you through, through Jack, so.
Yeah, we're very assessable, we're over in Golden Valley, and I'm, I'm like a surgeon, I work like twenty-four, seven, because if a developer has an emergency, you know, I got to make a meeting, I've learned that, there is... You're, you're at the, at the whim of the client.
I know.
Yeah, life of a consultant, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
For something like this, the learning curve, speaking for myself, is almost straight up.
So, is planning intending to send staff to arrest the meetings, these last two items on our agenda?
The learning curve should be minimal because...
We have two more items that are... We have two more items on our agenda tonight, the East Bethel Apartment Building Phase Two Report and Ordinance Amendment. Is this just intended for council, or is it intended for...
No, it's intended, actually, the Planning Commission would probably want to hear the report on the apartment phase two, it won't take but a few moments. As written in the packet, staff will update council on the status and land use issues of the East Bethel Village Apartments Phase Two projects. There are still ongoing discussions with the developer, and information material will be sent out at times that is submitted to us. The primary issue here is the method for the legal split of the lot and zoning of the site. There are no issues regarding the desire of the developer to proceed with the project. Rich Petty and Al Keller with the Ram Group informed staff that they wanted to begin Phase Two of the East Bethel Village Apartments by late spring or early summer. They indicated they would need a lot split of Block One, solder P U D for financing purposes. Staff presented this to the Planning Commission on February twenty-fifth, and as a result of this meeting, the Planning Commission scheduled an additional meeting for March seventeenth to accommodate the schedule. The Ram Group then decided on February twenty-eighth to forego the platting process and continue with the project without splitting the lot. We informed them that the lot split, they didn't meet the qualifications, and after they thought it over, they decided they would not plat the lot. They would go on and put this just on the same block. So apparently, they've changed their financing plan.
Yeah.
So they still intend to go forward with it. The Ram Group was also told that the project would require a comp plan amendment, there's only one half this site that's zoned for the high-density residential, and we did this back in twenty-seventeen. Because if you recall, at the time, if it was over a hundred units, it required a special comp plan amendment for the Met Council, it was very lengthy and required a lot of red tape. So at that time, anticipating the second phase, with maybe two or three years down the road, we opted to do the one-hundred-acre unit or less. So we are in the process of discussing this with Met Council about an administrative comp plan amendment. We spoke with the city attorney about this, and we feel like that we can get this thing done in about six weeks. It shouldn't interfere with their time schedule, so we'll be talking with the Ram Group here very soon to see, let them know that they can run their preliminary and final plat together. They will have to do the developer's agreement, there will have to be a new TIF plan for this because it really is a separate project from a financial standpoint to qualify for the TIF. And, uh, they will also have to meet all the architectural requirements of our ordinance, so we're still working with them on this, and it was last Friday we had their last discussion with them, so we anticipate hearing some information pretty soon on their new schedule.
So is there going to be a, a new site plan review with this as well?
Actually, the site plan was done for the whole project on the last, and we did it all, because that's when they did all the computations for the runoff utilities. Now, with the architectural standards, though, we can still incorporate that into the developer's agreement. And also, in order to get a building permit, they have to comply with all the zoning ordinance.
So did we get an answer from them as to why the building was constructed differently and how it was presented to council?
The answer that I got were the pictures that were presented were representative of what they might build. It was a picture of the project they did in Morris. I actually went back and looked at the minutes of that meeting, and they, that was what they stated, it was, the, the building would be similar to what they presented.
Well, I can take similar.
Yeah.
They did not build similar to what they presented as a render, other than the footprint of the building.
What was different? Because I wasn't sure then.
Colors, dormers. The balconies. They were significantly different, but mostly color, I mean, right now, it's a gray building. I mean, sorry, it looks like a barracks, you know? It's just a gray building. When they had an opportunity, if they would present what, or built what they presented. So their intent is to build a identical building in what they constructed?
The intent is to build the identical footprint now, we still have control with those other two items, through the developer's agreement and the building permit process to enforce the architectural standards.
So we do have the ability to, to make some changes?
That's correct.
Okay. I think we need to make sure those changes are made and followed, so. You know, as is presented, you know, it was a great example, look at the, the apartments with what they had, but it was like, okay, yeah, we, we know it didn't turn out the way we thought it was, or what it was sold to us, so. Okay.
So the, what they're planning, is that kind of going to go, like, closer to sixty-five, or north or south, or?
It'll go in the opposite direction, it'll go to the west, to the west of the existing building.
One example where they talk about mirroring the building, just flipping, that's literally what they're doing, is just flipping the building. Which is what we approved from a footprint standpoint, but I, I disagree, we approved with a gray slate building, that is not what was even presented to us, so. And nor do I plan to approve the same thing again, so. You know, that's my soapbox.
So that's the update on the East Bethel Village Phase Two Apartments. Anybody else has any questions?
So with the March seventeenth meeting of the Planning Commission not being at this point?
The March seventeenth commission of the Planning Commission has been scheduled as the, now it's been moved up a week, and we'll let you know here within the week. We may have to still have the meeting on the twenty-fourth because of the review to get some things done for this comp plan amendment. We'll have to get that advertised in the paper next Monday if we're going to have it on that March meeting.
Okay. Anything else on this item? Okay, item five.
Uh, item five is a proposed ordinance amendment to Article Four, Committees, Commissions, and Boards. City commissions and protocols were reviewed at the October seventh, twenty-nineteen city council work meeting. Council discussed the current process of incumbent commission reappointments, commission pay increases, need for an attendance policy, chairperson's term, and dual commission memberships. As a result of this discussion, council's direction to staff was to bring these items back to council for consideration. As city ordinance Article Four, Boards, Committees, and Commission requires an amendment relating to council members as ex officio commission members, staff proposes to incorporate the addition regarding dual commission membership and attendance as part of the ordinance amendment. These changes are presented in Attachment Two of your packet in a redline version. The matter of increasing the compensation for commission members will be addressed in the preparation and adoption of the twenty-twenty-one budget. Staff requests that council discuss and provide direction to staff on proposed ordinance changes, Article Four, Boards, Committees, and Commissions.
Any feedback for staff?
So, um, the only thing that I'm seeing you're changing so far is the removal of the council member being an ex officio member. And then you also have, uh, basically an attendance policy.
If you look under, are you looking under, on the redline version, Randy?
Yes, I am.
It also states that no member shall serve on more than one commission. It addresses very briefly an attendance policy, and it also removes that statement that one city council member shall be an ex officio member of every commission.
Right. So, currently, um, we are, we are, there is no, there is no changes to, um, chairperson's terms.
That wasn't the direction provided to us from the last work meeting.
I know we were going to revisit that one after we, the appointments for this year. I'm also looking at the commission pay increases. Because at the very bottom, I'm seeing the approving compensation for commission members. For the Planning Commission, it was twenty dollars per regular monthly meeting, and the others were ten dollars per monthly meeting. I thought we increased that to twenty dollars for all.
It is twenty dollars for all.
So then, are we still under the old resolution, and we need to update that?
No, that, that was, that was the attachment here that was done prior to the increase in pay. So it's twenty dollars across the board, so... So it's twenty dollars across the board, so when we start discussing the twenty twenty-one budget, we'll decide what that increase should be and include that in the budget for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, Jack's point is we're not changing the, the compensation here, it's a budget, it's a budget issue.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't address that essentially by, we, we can address it by ordinance, but I don't think we'd want to because that's something that could fluctuate more often than these other changes.
No, that's fine, I just, you have it as a resolution.
No, that, that.
No, this is a copy.
That's a copy, that was a previous one.
Correct, no, I understand that, but that's, that's why I'm bringing it forward, because I'm, I'm like, okay. Was concerned whether we had to have that updated. I still think that we should be considering the length of time that a chairperson holds per commission.
What are you proposing?
Well, one of my concerns is that when you have one chairperson, year after year after year, we are losing the opportunity of, uh, providing more people with that experience. And I also think that it, that it kind of changes the meetings and, and may actually change up the, the feel of it is, is maybe not quite the right word. But it seems to me that, that, you know, if you have the same commissioner all the time or the same chair all the time, that, that it could get to be, um, a stale body rather than, than having some things get changed and, and maybe some new ideas get pulled forward through it. We were also talking about, um, trying to make similar direction for each of the commissions with certain items. Are we still doing that?
In terms of?
Well, talking to maybe the chairperson so that, you know, all the commissions are following kind of the same. Yeah, thank you, very good, protocol.
Yeah, that, 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 that's correct and that's just, uh, kind of an introductory thing at the beginning of each year.
That's more of a policy thing, if anything.
Yeah, I don't, and that's fine. Um, getting back to, you know, um, the chair, I, I, my feeling is, is that, um, well, you do, the other commissions do not.
Well, you know, two, two things, two things need to consider is not everyone wants to be the leader, to be the chair.
I understand.
And not every, not everyone can be the leader or be the chair.
I can, I can appreciate that as well.
So by doing a mandatory rotation, you're defeating the purpose of both of that. Whereas the, 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 the primary function of someone sitting in this chair is to make sure this meeting runs smooth.
Right.
Period. It's not direction, it's not philosophy, it's making this, getting the business done. Encouraging feedback, encouraging involvement by everyone and then getting to an endpoint. And so it's running the meeting and, and, and some people will run away from that, they don't want anything to do with that. And, and, and they're, you know, in committees past, like, you know, we've had committees where no one wanted to be the chair because they didn't want to be that leader, you know, so. And then, and then forcing someone to do it, it could be good, I agree. But at the same time, it's, I think you're defeating your primary purpose of just getting the business done, so.
Well, but, but.
And, 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 and having the commissions choose their own chair, I think is important too.
In addition to what you just said, you might limit the length of time some people might spend on a commission that, well, it's my turn next, I, I quit. I don't want to do it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we say, okay, we're putting it on a rotation and it's going to go right down the line and gee, you're going to be the next chair and you're going to be the next chair after that and so on. I still feel like, you know, that each commission should choose their own chairperson. I guess my feeling though is, you know, you know, if we've had one person who's been the chair for ten years and nobody else is doing it, if that person then leaves that commission, then you have nobody who's had that experience.
But that, that could happen.
I'm just telling you my concern, I, I feel that, 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 you know,
You can encourage.
We're, we're getting into trouble.
You're, you're right, people should try it. I mean, it's only scary for the first couple of years.
Well, that's why you have vice chairs, so. It's when you're not there, someone else will let us.
It's, it's going to encourage people to try it, I totally get what you're saying, Randy. But even on the planning commission, we have people who say, I, I don't want to do it again. And that's okay, you know, and so maybe one of us that's been chair in the past will do it again for a year and give them another year to, 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 but we even try to encourage everybody on our committee to be chairs, I'm like. Maybe others just need to be encouraged.
My comment is, Randy, let the commissions do what they want, I don't, you know, why should we get involved? Let them, let them run their commissions, they're, they're, every commission I've been a liaison for, they're all doing a great job, so. I mean, I don't want to be setting ordinances here and time limits and that, let them, let them run their, run their commissions they want.
Well, the only, the only problem I have with that, Tim, and, and, you know, for the most part, I would agree. But I feel that, you know, there should be, you know, some standards to how our commissions are run simply from the standpoint that when you have people coming in who are having to present to our different commissions, that there is an expectation that there is going to be a similar process involved in getting what they need to have done. So in other words, if they come to the planning commission and they have to go through that process, that it's not a completely different process when it comes to city council. And the similar being true for Parks Commission, E D A or, or any other commission that we have, that there is at least a, a, a minimum standard as to how, how the meetings are run rather than, you know, again, I'm not saying that we should, you know, pull out the book of, you know, laws and say, okay, you're going to follow every, every single, you know, process involved. I'm just, it seems to me that there should be a minimal expectation.
But, but, but isn't, isn't rotating commission chairs every year kind of defeat that purpose that you just said of having that continuity?
No, no.
Or having new people learn the process?
No, and, and it's, and it's, and it, actually, they're, they're kind of two separate issues of what I'm talking about because, um, the one issue is, is trying to get more people with the experience of a chair um, in, in order to learn how to, 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 to run those commissions and/or, uh, getting more people with experience who may be future council members. My other point is being that, you know, when I was talking about standards for, for commission members, or not members, but, but for, for the process, um, is kind of a separate piece. I mean, I, I, I think.
Well, I agree, it is.
I think we were talking about, um, that we were going to, you know, have, you know, kind of staff meet with, you know, each particular chair and go over just, you know, some basic standards of how, how the meeting should be run.
Right, but again, that's outside of this ordinance, right?
Well.
It's a policy.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't want to be in the position of directing how they should have their, who runs their meeting and how they run it. If they get their business done, that seems to be all that matters to me.
Well, I mean, I, don't get me wrong, I, I don't disagree with the fact that we got to make sure the commissions are run in a certain protocol um, to, to, you know, if, if we ever get into a litigation matter, so it's, so that legal part of it's set. And then also to give that consistent flow of how meetings are run between council or commissions. That's easy enough done, I think that's something that, you know, can be set up with a policy, there's nothing.
Another point.
We don't sit and debate it, but, uh, but again, it's, it's back to, you know, how, how the commissions are operating. You know, that's kind of what this change in ordinance was.
If there's an issue with it, there's one of us at every one of those meetings, we should be able to bring it back for some, some kind of discussion.
Right.
And, uh, address it or address it through the staff.
Our time's up here. With what staff's presented, do we want to direct staff to go forward and make these changes and bring it to council?
Oh, I think so.
Okay.
Sounds fine to me. Yep.
Sounds good. You got consensus? All right.
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like to make one request and announcement to both the planning commission and the city council. Is that the next planning commission, city council meeting, we want to take a group photograph of the city council and individual photographs, so we put those on the website, and the same way with the planning commission. And also we'll do it to roads and the parks. I think it's good to have faces up there with names so people can identify that, sometimes it makes.
Can't use my picture ten years ago?
Yeah, if you, if you, if you've got a picture you'd like to have.
It's still on my I D card.
Okay, if you've got a picture you prefer, we'll take that too.
It's election year, you don't want these gray pictures.
Put the baby picture.
Might have to shave. So we just need to be early for that.
Well, if you want to, we can do it right after the meeting, it won't take but a few minutes.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, with that, would planning like to close their meeting?
Sir?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Okay, planning needs to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, second in a discussion.
Everybody go vote tomorrow.
That's right. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? A motion passes, our work needs adjourned. Thank you all.